Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session for today. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right, because we were off last week, this is going to be a double briefing session, plus there are a lot of requests for amendment substitutions, agenda changes, et cetera. But we'll start off with our September 19 briefing. Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon, members of the City Council. This is the advance briefing for Monday, September 19, 2022. Number one up on the consent agenda, pinch hitting for Johnny Perkins will be Mr. Patrick Stryker, who is going to give us a briefing on the contract amendment with cops to include funding for two crime victim advocates, be supervised by Mr. Stryker and his team. Patrick, thanks for filling in for me. I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Yeah, Johnny Perkins 2.0 here.
A little taller.
So, thank you for having us here. We've talked about this in the past several times before and keeps getting kind of held up and stuff like that. The funding that we're asking for is for the two crime victim advocates. This is temporary, just through June of this coming year. We had missed the funding for the last grant, and as soon as we get back on the cycle, they will get onto that grant. So it's just for a year and a half, which some of it has already been done, but we're trying to get caught up here. These two positions are pretty critical to what we do, especially with the shortage of police officers. These two are able to take so many things that people come into the cop shops for and take them by the hand for people that have been victimized by crime, get things going, get the paperwork going, get the neighbors together, and we have so many examples of things they've done. Put a bow on it and then hand it to the NROs to be able to take it from there. So they're a huge time saver. For SPD, they're good for community members, maybe who have issues with law enforcement and don't want to start there. These two are able to bridge that gap, which is great for a lot of community members. So there's a lot of things that they're able to bring to the table, and I know that this is, again, stuff we've talked about several times before, but hoping we can just get this. Yeah.
Is this, is the funding source just general fund or general fund reserves? Do you know?
That I don't know.
I think it was the Public Safety Fund, I think.
Because I was going to say, I mean, being, I'm certainly supportive. I think it's important, but being that it is essentially a one-time expense, I could see ARPA actually being a really good use to pay for this. But regardless, I think it's an important thing, so.
Sure.
Throw that out there.
Yeah.
So can I just, just to be clear, this was a result of a grant that cops always applies for, it's a three-year grant, correct?
Two-year.
Two-year grant for their victim advocates. And two years ago, the grant date changed.
Yes, and multiple organizations had missed. It was posted in a different spot, and so many organizations missed out on it, which they've changed, but we can get back on, yeah, hear this, Jim.
Right, so they'll go back and do the usual funding through the grant.
Correct.
I just want to say thank you to Patrick for your patience. Thank you to Johnny for getting this, this money in, and we've got one more round to do, and we'll get it done, and thank you both. In fact, if you could introduce yourselves, that would be great.
I'm Annette Hendrickson, and I work out of the Northeast Cop Shop, so I take a lot of the victims that are on from Division East, and I've been here for 16 months.
Welcome.
I'm Tracy Ponto. I work out of Cops West. Cops West has allowed me to work in their facility for 17 years now, but as a victim advocate now for going on three years.
Any other questions or anything?
I was just going to comment, I know Councilmember Cathcart said ARPA, that's kind of a long process. I know you guys have been held up in this, and although under a number of circumstances, I would double down on that, but because it's been so long, that's why we went out of the Public Safety Levy to move these funds along and get this completed. So, thank you again.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stryker. I couldn't have said it better myself. Appreciate you filling in for me there. And Councilmember Wilkerson, we have identified funds for that, and so we will not need to use ARPA dollars to cover these, these funds, which is why we waited to now to put it in front of you, making sure we had the dollars available. All right, Mr. Stryker, again, thank you. Item number two on the consent agenda, it's a memorandum of understanding between the Spokane County Sheriff's Office and the Spokane Police Department relating to mental health grant funds. This was also filed under ordinance 36274, Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund, and again, this rises from the need to accept funding for the regional mental health team major Eric Olson.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. Thanks again for the pleasure to get up here and speak to you. The, in my hands are the MOU and also the grant SBO for the BHU unit. This continues the funding, allows the city to continue the funding that WASP gives us to pay for the five officers and the case manager that the Spokane Police Department uses to deploy the BHU unit in our downtown and actually throughout the region. Any questions on this one? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Major Olson. Items three and four on the consent agenda for Monday, September 19. Item three, report of the mayor pending claims and payments, approved obligations, including those of Parks and Library. And number item four, city council meeting minutes, which will be completed and filled in for the council meeting on Monday, September 19. Moving to special budget ordinances, our first one up is require a request from Channel Five out of the Equipment Reserve Fund. This action arises out of the need to purchase video equipment and storage equipment. Our presenter is Mr. John Delay, but before John starts, many of you probably are aware of this, but Mr. Delay has decided to retire at the end of the year, and I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank you.
Start of next year.
To, to, to start of next year, to thank you for your service, your commitment to the city of Spokane, the great work you do to make all of us look good in front of the camera, and appreciate the time that you put into this great city and serving. So I wanted to share that, John. Thank you.
Ah, geez. Thank you for those kind words, and it will be the start of next year.
Twenty-three.
But one of the things that we're looking at now, this, this item was brought to you before, the Finance Committee. We're transferring money out to provide for some technology upgrades, and there is briefed in front of Finance Committee, this will provide for central storage system, central storage system that we're in need of in Channel Five, and then technology upgrades with camera equipment. So, any questions?
So, I've so enjoyed working with you the past however long I've been here, so you'll be missed. What's, does this have anything to do with the briefing center?
Pardon?
The briefing center, is what's going on in the briefing center?
No, this, this is specific, this would be down in our office, and the central storage unit basically provides a shared storage device for all of our editing systems, which speeds up the editing process, allows us to pull up and send temporary files to you for approval. It just speeds up the process and gets us up to speed in technology. And then the camera systems, we're just updating our field production cameras.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Delay. As I mentioned previously, ordinance 36274, Public Safety and Judicial Grant Fund, for the acceptance of funding for the regional mental health teams, was already presented by Major Olson. So moving then to resolutions and final reading ordinances, our first resolution up is declaring Stryker Sales Corporation as a sole source provider and authorize the city entering a 10-year contract to provide medical devices program for the city of Spokane Fire Department. Our presenter is our fire chief, Brian Schaefer.
Good afternoon again. Thank you for allowing us to present. This is an item that was briefed in the Public Safety Committee. It gives the fire department a future with existing technology that needed to be replaced imminently, which we use every day on patient care situations, both to manage airways and to treat people from cardiac events. Literally every single patient in the city of Spokane has, has experience with these type of medical devices. They're FDA-controlled, they need to be turned over because of the frequency of use. This agreement will carry us into the future to make sure that we've got the best and the most contemporary equipment that's proven with our, with our people. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. The next two ordinances will be considered under hearings, items H2 and H3, and we'll turn to those here shortly. Next up on our ordinances are, the first is relating to the forfeiture funds account, and the second is relating to the illegal camping ordinance, also known as protection of public lands and properties. And I'll turn to Council President Beggs.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Perkins, on the forfeitures, we briefed this in committee a couple of weeks ago. We were back and forth on this matter and also an SBO that would provide some funding from the forfeiture funds, and there was some talk of moving things to the 26th, but we went back and forth, and I've spoken with various council members, and they really wanted to have a presenter on the best public health means of reducing drug usage in our community and drug crime. And so we're, we've identified someone, we're trying to get them scheduled, and so there's a request to move this to the 26th, along with that SBO that's scheduled for tonight on the 26th. So I was looking for a motion to defer until the 26th.
I move to defer to September 26th.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, that's deferred to the 26th, and then I will defer to Councilmember Kinnear to talk about 36272.
So, gracious. This has been a long time coming, because we've been working on it for months with legal, and there have been various iterations of this. This is one that legal has told us is defensible, and I know that Lyndon's in the back, Lyndon, if you at any time feel like you need to come forward and stop me, or say you're absolutely wrong, please feel free to do so. But this is not just about downtown, this is about our entire city. It's also about protecting our river and riparian areas. It specifically calls out the viaducts downtown and the areas around shelters, so that we don't have what we have now, which is people camping out around shelters and preying upon those who are inside the shelters. And in terms of the viaducts, we know that if you want to continue on through and cross a viaduct right now, it becomes a little tricky, so this calls that out as well. There are a number of other things that it deals with. This is not sit and lie, it is camping. Those two often get confused, and I, I just want to commend the legal department, because they've been very thorough about, right, this isn't everything that everybody wants, but we know it is defensible in the court of law, and that is very important. We do believe that it will make a difference to our city, to our downtown, and as Council President said, you know, if nobody likes it, I think we've done a good job, because there's going to be something in it that is going to be for everyone, and it is enforceable. And I would ask that you comment on this. We've worked together on this.
Yeah, well, we've, we have, and a lot of people did, and a couple of weeks ago, Councilmember Cathcart joined us with the mayor and her staff and City Legal, and again, we're looking at something that's defensible in court. One of my worries is that if we go too far in any one section, that, that tree branch, if that breaks, the whole ordinance goes away, and so potentially we could jeopardize our ability to manage the public spaces the way that we want to. I think this is a good compromise, and we at least verbally all came to an agreement that we should move forward with this. I know some people would like to add things, and there'll be probably some discussions about that going forward. And it's just a hard situation, there's just no good answers. There are people who don't have housing and need a place to live, and we don't have enough housing and shelter appropriate for all people, and yet at the same time, we need to provide some basic safety and protection from imminent harm in those locations. So this tries to balance all those competing needs, and undoubtedly, people on the continuum of concerns about this will have concerns with this, but it's, so far, I think it's the prudent way to go forward.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so, thank you, and, and the Council President mentioned there might be some additional items brought forward for consideration, and I circulated a couple of amendments today to council, which my understanding was there was going to be a suspension of the rules, we were going to consider this tonight, so I'm actually going to hold off on making the motion for these amendments until next week, get some additional feedback, and maybe tighten these up a bit. But, but basically, one of my biggest concerns, and it's addressed in one of these amendments, is the compromise down from a half a mile, which has been kind of the discussion for months, to, to three blocks, which is the current around congregate shelters. And specifically, in fact, that was one piece of why I was unable to support the operating agreement on the Trent Shelter. It was a secondary reason, but, but it was one of the reasons. And that's because I feel like we've made a commitment, the administration made a commitment to, to make sure that the Water Works neighborhood isn't vulnerable to camping concerns, and they are about a half a mile from that Trent Shelter, and so by narrowing this down, they're left, I think, very vulnerable to, to situations that might occur, and that's just something that really is, is a very important aspect of this for me. And so above everything, that is critical to me, is that we need to expand that from three blocks to a half a mile. I've also presented in these amendments, and happy to, these are not secret, happy to make them public, the idea of including enforcement within 1,000 feet of licensed, authorized children-centric facilities, including but not limited to public parks, daycares, children's sports centers, education facilities, campus dorms, community centers, or after-school centers. We want to make sure our neighborhoods are safe, especially for our kids, and so I think that's a really, really important aspect of this. And then another change would expand the enforcement from viaducts that are simply railroad viaducts located essentially downtown, to expand it to include all viaducts within the city of Spokane, as well as an additional, instead of 50 feet around them, it'd be 300 feet around those sites. I think you, one needs to only walk by or drive by pretty much any of the viaducts to see how much of an issue this is, both downtown as well as outside of downtown, and, you know, we've seen sort of the unintended consequences immediately after some of the fencing went up, that folks just simply moved a few feet outside the viaduct and, and camped there instead, and that's not as much of an issue right now, but I think it could be. And so I think 50 feet is just too small a space to protect those, those areas there. So, again, happy to make these public, get these out there, but I will bring these forward or some version of these next Monday when this is considered.
Councilmember Kinnear.
So I should have added, something very important in this version is a substantial harm clause, which gives police some discretion about when they can enforce this, and legal department will be going over this with police, so that there is no ambiguity in when they can enforce and when they should not enforce. So I think that is an important distinction, so that we don't have to list every single thing that we want enforced, but by, by putting that substantial harm clause in, it is saying that a police officer can look at a situation and determine if that person should be moved. So if there are needles, if there's garbage around, if they're threatening people, if they have weapons, whatever it be, it may be, that police officer would have that discretion to move somebody or cite them. And that was the brilliance of our legal team that put that in, so that we did not have to list everything, and we would have a broader interpretation. And again, as Council President said, if there is one thing that is not defensible or that we, that the courts can point at, the whole thing will be tossed, and we don't want that to happen. Thank you.
Councilmember Bingle.
On Councilman Cathcart's amendments, we, we've also run those by legal, and they believe that they're defensible, so it's not something that should cause the entire tree to fall.
I heard something different today, but that would be par for the course.
Well, so, Mr. Smithson, would you mind coming on down and clarifying?
Thank you, Council President, Councilman Bingle. I don't know that we should probably talk about this at, at an open meeting, I think it'd probably be better for executive, but if we are deferring for a week, I think those are conversations we can have this weekend, and we can flush it out by the end of the week.
Great. Thank you.
We'll get, we'll get an executive session scheduled. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smithson. All right, moving on then, under hearings, first reading ordinances, this is a hearing on the vacation of the alley between Everett Avenue and vacated Sanson Avenue, and it'll be a first reading on the alley between Everett Avenue and vacated Sanson Avenue. Our presenter is Eldon Brown.
We're just setting the hearing for the next Monday for the vacation of the alley between Everts and Sanson, from Julia to Myrtle. This is up in the northeast part of town. As you can see on both sides of it there, it's already been vacated, and the property owners up there would just like to actually close this alley off, because they've had vandalism. It's an unimproved alley. Does have a driveway entrance on the Julia side, on the west end of it there, that already has a private driveway that signifies that it is going to be private. It's a little ahead of the game, but they put that in years ago. Anyway, we intend to vacate this using the non-user statute. It was platted in 1900 and annexed into the city in 1907, and you have to have a five-year period in there where it was unopened and in the county for five years before it was annexed into the city. So it meets all that criteria, so we would recommend approval of this, subject to conditions, and one of the conditions would be a no-cost vacation with a non-user statute. In the west, 130 feet of this has a pole or, I think, in there, and they would like to reserve an easement on just the west 130 feet. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, if you have any. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The next item under hearings is a hearing declaring the intent of the council to change or establish certain asset assessment rates with the East Bragg Business Association. It's also a final reading ordinance relating to the East Bragg Parking and Business Improvement Area regarding changing of certain assessment rates. Our presenter is Amanda Beck.
Sorry, I swear this mouse is always... Good afternoon, Council President, council members. So previously, I had come before you at the Finance Committee to speak about the resolution that was the lead-up to this ordinance, and then today we'll be discussing the ordinance itself. So to provide some background, the East Bragg Business Improvement District is slightly different than our Downtown Business Improvement District, so you'll see on screen the area within that solid border is all of the East Bragg bid. They have three separate zones. The way they calculate their assessment is based on 75% of the lot square foot, and then 25% is the total assessed value from the county assessor. So each of those zones has a different minimum and maximum that can be assessed each year with the special assessment, and they vary slightly from each other, whichever zone that you're in. So with this ordinance, staff is proposing some new language. What we're doing is establishing an update to the existing minimum and maximums that are in the code, and then we are adding in new language that would take the, the minimum and maximum that is assessed and tie it to the Consumer Price Index. So what we do for both of our bids every year is we look at the Consumer Price Index, see how it has changed, and then they reflect that into the formula that they put in for each parcel to see what their assessment is for that year. So we are proposing to do that to make sure that the East Bragg Business Association, or ESBA, that's the bid manager for the East Bragg bid, is able to appropriately keep up with the change in labor and inflation to serve the ratepayers. So right now, that, like many of us, they are experiencing some cost inflation, and they aren't able to provide the level of service that they could if we had done this previously to keep them more up to date. So just to kind of give you an idea, thankfully, Finance took a look at this and ran the numbers for us. In 2022, if we hadn't done a minimum or maximum, if we had just let it be whatever it was tied to Consumer Price Index, they would have been able to collect $86,000 versus the 69 that they have been levying for this year. But what I will say, ESBA has been doing a really great job, they're on track to collect 92% of their assessments this year, so hopefully, all the stuff that they... So hopefully, all the stuff that they need to do this year, they'll be able to with the funds that they've been able to collect. But due to the holiday briefing you today, first reading is also today, and then the final hearing will be next Monday, and Laverne and ESBA will be able to be there for a presentation as well. Any questions?
Thank you, Amanda. Council President, members of the City Council, our final item for the advanced briefing agenda Monday, September 19, is a hearing on the final reading ordinance suspending the acceptance of annual applications for amendments to the city's comprehensive plan. And our presenter is Mr. Kevin Freibot.
Good afternoon, Council President, members of the council. It's good to see you again. It's been a little while. The ordinance before you, let's see, the first reading is today, and then it'll be next week for the hearing, is to suspend the 2022 and 2020, or to 2023 application cycle for comprehensive plan amendments. This also would suspend private applications for the Unified Development Code, because they're tied together, the same threshold and docketing process. Also, it includes language that if this year's applications are not completed this year, and we have no indication that that would happen, but if it were to happen, if they were held for any reason, they would also have to wait through the next cycle in order to complete. That's because under state law, we're only allowed to amend the comp plan really once a year, unless there are certain situations. This ordinance would not affect emergency ordinances. We can do emergency amendments to the comp plan. Also, it would not affect any sub-area planning, so the South Logan Study that's ongoing, it won't affect that. It also won't affect any city-directed amendments. So it's just for the private application process. The reason we are proposing this, if I can get the screen to work. There we go, is to accommodate not only staff capacity for the shaping Spokane housing efforts that are ongoing, but also because, as I said, we can only amend the plan once a year. It is difficult to accept and process private applications to amend something that we're also amending at the same time. It becomes a juggling act. So this allows us not only the capacity, but the logical ability to amend the comprehensive plan following through with shaping Spokane housing and the recent building opportunities and choice for all amendment, or the interim ordinance. So I did this morning supply some slightly modified language. This was not to change the intent of the ordinance, it was just to clarify that it would also affect the Unified Development Code. If someone wanted to apply for a private application to change the development code, or that's Title 17, that would also, this would also suspend that process. So other than that, I'm happy to answer questions.
Councilmember Cathcart?
How many applicants are, would you say we have in an average year that would probably get postponed or delayed because of this?
We generally get between four and nine.
Okay.
Nine is a lot. And then, of course, it depends on what they're planning. We get some very significant ones that take up quite a lot of time. That's part of the reason we have a threshold process. It's hard to know, for sure.
And then could, my second question would be, can council, if something comes forward that is critical, makes sense to us in some way, we still have the ability to do a change as an interim, correct?
Yeah.
And move that direction?
City-sponsored applications, our city-sponsored proposals will still be allowed, just as, like I said, with the sub-area planning, that's technically a city-sponsored one. If we were to, say, a few years ago, we identified an issue with the arterial map that had to be, had to be resolved very quickly, this would not prevent us from doing that. It simply suspends the private applications. So the private property owner who wants to rezone his property.
Right.
They'll have to wait a year.
But if we had an application come forward that would create quite a few housing units, but it was dependent upon a zone change, rather than letting that get delayed two years, we could act as a council to make that change, correct?
We wouldn't get an application because we won't ask for them. There's an application period, which is typically September, October. We're in that now. But that doesn't mean that council couldn't, if someone came to them with an issue, council could still propose something.
Okay.
And ultimately, the goal of shaping Spokane housing is to really address and look at how the comp plan is allowing for additional housing. So we're in that direction also.
Okay.
Just to keep in mind.
Kevin?
Yes, ma'am.
You emailed us on a possible minor change. Did that get entered into Terry?
We still have to vote on that.
Yeah, I think I've sent Terry the revised ordinance, but no action's been taken to replace the version.
Okay.
That I'm aware of.
Yeah, so it's, the request is a substitute. It came in after one today, at least by my email. So we would need a motion to suspend the rules, and then we would do a motion to substitute.
We can do all the suspension and stuff at the end, right? We can do this at the end without anything else?
Well, we should do it now, because we're just about to finalize this agenda. So is there a motion to suspend the rules for purposes of adjusting agendas at today's briefing session?
Still moved to suspend the rules.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of suspending the rules indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Oh, and I just had an email that it might not have gone out to all City Councils, so I'm going to send that really quick.
For those of you that are interested in what the change was, that's what I have on the screen here. That's the difference in the two ordinances.
Yeah, so, does everyone have a chance to look at that? Okay. Is there a motion to substitute the ordinance?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Motion second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, it is substituted.
Thank you very much. We'll see you next week.
Thank you, Kevin. Council President, that is conclusion of our advanced briefing for Monday, September 19.
All right, and before I ask for a motion to approve, I just want to note that on ordinance C36271, having to deal with forfeitures, we moved the final reading to the 26th. And when we get to today's agenda on first reading ordinances, we'll need to amend that to make that to be the 19th. But all those in favor of adopting the agenda as modified indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the agenda for the 19th is approved, and that brings us to today's agenda.
Thank you, Council President. Members of the City Council, this is the advanced briefing agenda for Monday, September 12. We're going to go a little bit out of order. We're going to start with a resolution, joint city-county resolution adopting the revised Felsfield Airport Layout Plan and delegating authority to Spokane Airport Board to approve and adopt changes to the airport layout plans. I'm pleased to introduce the Chief Executive Officer of the Spokane International Airport, Mr. Larry Crowder.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, and good afternoon, Council President, members of council. Great to be here with you all. Periodically, the Federal Aviation Administration requires airports to update their master plans and airport layout plans. It is a prerequisite for receiving federal funding through the Airport Improvement Program and other grant projects for projects at the airport. And in this particular case, the last time that the airport layout plan and master plan was updated was 2005. So the FAA came to the airport board and said, hey, it's about time that we entered into an update process, and that was recently completed. The airport board accepted the airport layout plan at the end of July. The Board of County Commissioners passed the joint resolution in early August. There are members of council that were briefed in June on the airport layout plan and master plan. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have with regard to the airport layout plan or master plan, but I know you have a crowded agenda, so I don't want to take up too much time.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to say thank you for your time in briefing me on what was going on. I read the entire plan. I know way more acronyms than I ever thought that I would. But I'm excited to see a lot of that investment in Felsfield up in my, up in my district. And so I appreciate what you guys are doing, the direction you're heading, and I'm looking forward to seeing some more, you know, commercial traffic coming up in there for, for the private businesses, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Bingle. You were a quick study on that, by the way. Just a quick reminder, over 462 jobs are at Felsfield with an annual economic impact of just about $80 million. This past weekend, on Friday and Saturday, we had a regional flying event for the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association, where they actually chose us and asked us if we would host the event. So I think that means that Felsfield is showing well in the general aviation community. So I think that's, that was a very positive for us, even nationally.
Thank you, Mr. Crowder.
Thank you, sir.
All right, that will take us now to our consent agenda for the advanced briefing of Monday, September 12. And item number one is a value blanket renewal with HR Fowler Company for as-needed purchases of curb and valve boxes. Our presenter is James Sakamoto.
Council President, members of council, good afternoon. Item one is the value blanket renewal with HD Fowler Company for the as-needed purchases of curb boxes and valve boxes. The value blanket renewal is valid for the final four years of the contract at an annual estimated cost of $225,000 annually, including tax. Staff recommends approval of a value blanket with HD Fowler. Are there any questions?
Thank you, James. Good to see you. Item number two on the consent agenda, also a value blanket renewal for Chevron lubrication products, as well as ultra-low sulfur died diesel.
Good afternoon, council members. Today, I'm seeking approval to exercise a one-year extension with Eljo Oil Company for the purchase of Chevron lubrication products and ultra-low sulfur died diesel for the waste energy facility. The annual cost for the lubrication products is not to exceed $55,000, and the diesel is not to exceed $155,000, including tax. Any questions? Thank you.
Items number three and four. Item number three, purchase from Bud Clary Ford of four F-150 Lightnings, and also purchase of an F-650 Crew Cab. Presenter, Rick Giddings.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins. Good afternoon, council. First one is, it was going to be a pre-purchase for four all-electric Lightnings. The order window caught up to us, so now we are asking to purchase them for the engineering department for a total of $198,020.78. And the second one is the purchase of a, a pre-purchase of a F-650 Crew Cab or similar. We're still looking for vehicles right now. And a 38-foot or similar trailer for the police department's tac team to basically house their bicycles, repair their bicycles, mobile command, more or less, for their bicycle fleet. Any questions on any of that?
Yeah, thanks, Rick. We were talking earlier today about potentially having that F-650 or similar truck potentially have multi-use for fire, too, with their child safety house, because they're looking for a truck for their new fires. Children's safety house. I don't know if you can speak more to that. I know that you were saying that there were some challenges in the type of truck. I don't know if you had a chance to clarify if there's any existing trucks that could be used on those type of trailers or something like that.
Yeah, and I don't have anything definitive to tell you. We are, the conversation has been begun on if we can find some common ground there, although there are some significant challenges in the fact that this truck itself for the tac team needs to have a big box on the back, which means it has to use a trailer hitch, a bumper pull trailer hitch. Fire department needs, the size of that, of that safety house is large enough that it needs a fifth-wheel style hitch. And so that's a big obstacle there. And then the, just the needs of both departments to be able to deploy these things when they need them raises some obstacles. We're not done with the conversation yet, but just, you know, there are some challenges that we need to work through.
And you were also mentioning, too, that this is just a pre-approval so that it can still be within that scope?
Yeah, right. So this is a, this truck and trailer combination is fairly unusual. The order windows are tight for everything, and so we're far from having all the specs worked out at this point. So there's still room to have conversation.
I was just wondering if it would be open to amending it to say, like, and for police and for fire, like, pre-purchase to be used for the police tac team and fire? Or if that would be a problem?
The obstacles that exist for this, I think that would be a stretch. It really does seem like that this is going to have to be something that is specific for each department. I'm okay with the wording, but it really is likely that we're going to, there's going to be significant enough challenges that we're not going to be able to find one vehicle that does both jobs.
And there's a, there's a significant difference in the trailer pulling and a fifth wheel being in there. Do you want to just go into that a little bit to show why it would be kind of difficult to be able to interchange there?
Yeah, so a fifth wheel has a kind of a hitch that goes into the middle of a bed, right about at the axle level. And so it's designed for maneuverability, but more importantly, to haul heavy loads. And so the bike trailer doesn't need to be that heavy because it's just hauling bicycles, but it does need to be big enough to haul the bicycles. The house itself, the safety house, is very large, very heavy, and it will need to have that fifth wheel. And so that's the chief obstacle that I can see right now. And again, the conversation's early, but there are, that is, that is the biggest one that I can see right now.
Would it be feasible for us to get an update as you're continuing that conversation so that we can get answers to Councilman's opponent's questions as we're moving through the process?
Absolutely. And the emails, emails are starting right now, so we'll have a time that we can meet and talk this all out, and as soon as we have any more information, we can provide that for you.
Yeah, can you, I don't have the briefing papers. What's the funding source for three and four?
Oh, I'm sorry. So the funding source for the Lightnings, that comes, I believe that comes from Engineering's budget. And then the F-650, there was an SBO done a few weeks ago, and I can't remember.
It comes from the state, the grant for training for police reforms.
And that, so that goes, my question, can we intermingle that with fire because of that funding source being specific for police? And if we did do something for both, would then we have to draw that from the general fund to pay for it?
And that's a little out of my wheelhouse, but it is certainly part of the conversation.
Yeah, and that's, that's certainly my concern. So, but on the three, the four trucks, so those have been planned for all along? That's not a new expense?
That's part of the budget, and we have charging that is, actually, the water, the foothills complex has got great electricity, and so the charging will be in place before the vehicles show up. Any other questions?
Can I keep you up here for your special budget ordinance?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Mr. Giddings will continue on. It's on page 10, ordinance 36268, Special Budget Ordinance Fleet Services Fund for the purchase of Fleischer trucks.
So this arises from a truck that we received earlier this year that we had ordered a year prior. Came, it didn't meet our specifications. We returned the truck. The refund for the truck went into the Fleet Replacement Fund unallocated. We just need to allocate that money so we can replace the, purchase the truck from another supplier. Any questions on that?
So just, just for clarity, so we bought a truck, returned it, got money back, went into unappropriated reserves, and now we're transferring it back into the budget to rebuy the, or buy a different truck?
Exactly right, yeah. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giddings. Items number five and six. Item five, value blanket with NAPA for, for item five A, automotive filters. Item five B, automotive parts. And then item six, another value blanket renewal, battery systems for the purchase of automotive batteries and for the purchase of tire chains. Our presenter is Mr. Adam Russell.
Good afternoon, council. Fleet Services is looking to set up value blankets with NAPA from July 1, 2022 through October 19, '24, using Washington State Contract 12621 for the as-needed purchases of automotive filters in the amount of $150,000, as well as miscellaneous automotive parts in the amount of $300,000. Can I answer any questions on that? Next, we're looking to set up value blanket renewals with battery systems for the purchase of automotive batteries in the amount of $100,000, as well as a contract with P-WEG for the purchase of tire chains from September 22nd, or September 23rd, '22 through September 22nd, '25, in the amount of $80,000 per year.
Are these just standard car batteries?
Yeah, yeah. Automotive van truck. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. Item seven on the consent agenda, value blankets with 7A Western Systems for the purchase of traffic signal control cabinets, and item 7B, Valmont Industries to purchase signal standards. Our presenter is Clint Harris.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council. The Street Department seeking approval to establish a value blanket with Western Systems for the purchase of traffic signal control cabinets at a cost not to exceed $542,000 annually. And then for item B, the Street Department is seeking approval to establish a value blanket with Val- with Valmont Industries to purchase single, signal standards at a cost not to exceed $255,000 annually. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Item eight is a master value blanket with Fastenal for inventory management services including vending machines. Our presenter is Thea Prince.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize, I have a new laptop and don't know how to turn my camera on, so. This is a master value blanket with Fastenal that will be used by multiple departments for vending machines and products. At this time, I have five or six different individual value blankets set up with Fastenal for departments, and I'm just combining them into one for $650,000 annually plus tax. Any questions?
I, I have a quick question. So this is, is this just for vending machines, like, in this building?
This is for vending machines that are at fleet, at street, at water. This is vending machines, not like you would think a vending machine would be with soda and snacks. It's holding different products that, that they need to have available 24/7.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
So, a follow-up, what, what sort of revenue is derived from these vending machines? If we're spending $650,000, are we at least making that much back?
No, there is no revenue. This is, no, there's no revenue.
Give out free, free things?
Excuse me?
So how does this work? If there's no revenue, I'm, are we subsidizing the vending machines at $650,000 a year?
Well, the $650,000 is what we're costing for the, or what we're paying for the products that are put into the vending machine, that our employees are taking out when they need to take them for a job. So rather than just having to place an order with Fastenal, Fastenal deliver the product that we need, they keep these, the products in these vending machines that we then.
It's not snacks. It's not snacks. It's like screws and tools, but rather than ordering from them, they're on-premises, and it just is an inventory control mechanism.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
Correct, so gloves. And I, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head what each of the departments have in their own individual vendings, but it's, it's items like the gloves and maybe the safety glasses, items that are needed on jobs.
No, that.
So that they're available at all times.
It makes a lot more sense now, I, I understand. But thank you very much for the clarification.
Okay. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Prince. Item nine, 10, and 15. Item nine, contract with Industrial Inspection Services for ultrasonic fitness testing at the waste energy facility. Item 10, contract with Industrial Access for needed stack repairs at the waste-to-energy facility. And I'm going to keep Chris up there for item 15, which is a contract with Waste Management Recycle America for the processing and marketing of recyclable materials.
Thank you. The first item is a two-year contract with Industrial Inspection Services for ultrasonic thickness testing of boiler tubes and piping at the waste energy facility during outages. The estimated annual cost of this contract is $134,000, including tax. The next item is a contract with Industrial Access for stack repairs at the waste-to-energy facility. The expected cost of this contract is $90,579, with an additional reserve of $36,000 in the event of any unexpected repairs. And the final item is a five-year extension with Waste Management for the sorting and sale of recyclables for curbside collection. This extension includes a $25 per ton processing cost increase in 2023, an additional $20 ton increase in 2024, before reverting to CPI index increase for the remaining term of the contract. These increases are due to rising labor costs and for capital improvements to better sort plastic and paper grades. The projected annual expense for this contract is $2,320,000, with an annual expected revenue of $1,315,000 prior to capital improvements. Any questions on any of those items?
On our, on number 15, the, the contract extension, so is this, in essence, we're subsidizing our recycling by a million a year?
That's correct, and we have been subsidizing for the last several years. In 2018, there's what's referred to as a China Sword, where they stopped importing recyclables, and since that point, it's decreased the amount of revenue that has been generated off that, so we've been currently subsidizing for the last several years.
And I was reading in the, the tonnage rates increasing over the next couple of years, could you sort of explain that to me a, a little better? I didn't quite understand how that worked out.
What specifically?
The. Forgive me, I can, I can find it here, but I saw where in October of this year, it's going to go up $25 a ton, and then in January of 2024, go up $20 a ton. Can you explain that to me a little bit?
Correct, so those costs, over the 10-year life of the, the current agreement, it's, cost increases have been based off a CPI index, and so cumulatively, it's been 17% increase on their processing cost. In reality, you know, minimum wage in 2013, when the contract was started, 919, it's currently 1449. So they've had escalators well and above that 17% that they need to adjust for, so.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so, you know, what was it, in 2020, we decided to go to every other week recycling because of the, the huge deficit there, the, the delta between the revenues and the expenses. And so I'm wondering, what's the difference between that and now? I mean, I, I thought we had started to close that gap by going to every other week, and now we're at a million and a half, and it looks like it might even increase to about a $2 million subsidization.
We did, the, the bi-weekly collection reduced our costs, and it also had the unintended benefit of people were more cognizant of what they're putting in the cart to make it that two weeks, so we have seen a decrease in the amount of contamination, but, you know, unfortunately, this is a, a step the other direction for them to allow to recoup their, their costs. And I will say there is a benefit, too, because, you know, by providing with better sorting, you know, there's a, a hopeful revenue increase as a result of that by, you know, tapping into OCC markets and number five plastics that we currently aren't pulling out to, you know, recoup those, so. And, I mean, honestly, too, is, it's, this is a, a national problem of recycling, and that's why you're seeing a focus on EPR efforts, you know, nationwide and within the state, because, you know, it's somewhat an inequitable system right now.
But if we hypothetically, if we did not collect recycling and it just went into refuse, how would that change, do you know, the, the cost?
Not, there, right now, because we are receiving a revenue, there would be an additional cost to it because, you know, you would have the wear and tear through the waste energy facility, and then, you know, the non-burnable products like glass, metals, things like that would be coming out the other end, so you're paying for that maintenance expense, but you're basically landfilling at the end of it, so it, it, you know, doesn't quite pencil out, but, you know, it, that gap is, is certainly closed by, you know, the, the step, so. But, and the other thing, too, is that it's also, you know, this is a step in alignment with the Sustainability Action Plan, you know, the items in there that are listed for improving recycle markets, this is a step in that direction, so.
No, I, I get that, but we didn't necessarily allocate.
No, I, I understand, yep. I have the same economic concerns that you do, so.
But just to clarify for people who are watching, this change is unrelated to collection, because this is the processing.
That is correct, yep.
So when we went to every other week, that didn't impact this at all, because they still have the same thing, so it's a different, and it's, we use the word subsidize, but it's, it's an enterprise fund. The people who are using it are paying for it. It's not that the general tax funds are paying for it.
Right. One last question, I saw that Waste Management had talked about a $13.5 million investment in the smart facility. Could you give me a little more information on that?
Yeah, so right now, their process is currently set up for intense manually sorting, and they're making a move towards optical sorting that allow, like, right now, you know, they have number one plastics, number two plastics, and everything else is lumped into three through seven, so by having optical sorting, they're able to target, you know, different grades of plastic that might have a higher revenue return that they're able to pull out by doing that. And same with OCC, they're able to pull that material out of the mixed paper more efficiently to, you know, recover more of that material and, you know, the economic benefit resulting from it, so.
Of that 13 and a half, last question, of that 13 and a half is, are we going to be, are we being asked to?
No, no, the, yeah, I would expect that, you know, everyone else is going to see a, a, you know, increase as well, the other parties that utilize a facility, so.
And could you also just, you said EPR, could you spell that out?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, that's extended producer responsibility, and that's basically legislation that targets, you know, whether it be batteries or plastics or things like that, it puts the onus on the producers to be responsible for their products from, you know, cradle to grave. You know, an example is if you look at a, a beverage lid from McDonald's, it'll be stamped recyclable, when in reality, it's, you know, theoretically possible to recycle it, but it's not feasible, and so it's a way, you know, producers kind of cut corners on products, and, you know, municipalities are left to, to handle the results, so.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Chris, before you leave, I just want, I know a little bit about this space, and I just want to compliment Chris and his staff for the discussions with the private contractor. The prices that we were initially talking about were nearly double what was ultimately agreed upon with Waste Management, and so I want council president, you and the council to know, Chris and his team did a great job. We sat down, we talked about strategy, we talked about what was reasonable for this city and our customers, and the initial price that was being conveyed to us was not only not reasonable, it was quite frankly outrageous, and as someone who, who's dealt with this industry for 17 years, there is a way to get to where we needed to go to still ensure that we're providing the sustainable recycling that our sustainability plan calls for, but Chris and his team did a great job. And then in closing, Waste Management came to the table as a partner, and the investment that they're making, private companies in the trash business hate to make investments like that unless they're getting something back. But the fact that Waste Management stood up and said, "We're going to make this investment to make sure that we have a," having optical sorters as opposed to hand sorters is going to make this process so much more efficient and less expensive for us as, as a city and a customer of Waste Management. So, Chris, thank you for your team, and great job.
Well, one last comment, I, I think, you know, if we're going to continue to, or the ratepayers, to be clear, going to continue to subsidize this, I, I think it would be great for us to work on some kind of a plan that, and I think it should include everybody in Eastern Washington, frankly, and, and try to work together economies of scale and see if we can try to solve or at least, you know, mitigate for these rising recycling costs.
And those, those discussions do take place, you know, like, for example, we have a, a meeting this spring for, you know, glass, you know, glass is one of the big challenges that, you know, there's recycling, recyclers, true recyclers on the west side of the state, but by the time you look at transportation costs and everything, it isn't feasible, so what can we do to, you know, pool all the resources together on the east side of the state to, you know, facilitate something like that, so.
Can crush it and put it in their, their, you know, asphalt mix, and, I mean, just, there's got to be some out-of-the-box thinking.
Yeah, well, but I mean, there is a, a demand for, you know, wine bottles, but it, like I said, it's just not locally, so how do we leverage our resources to, to make that happen, so.
And then, to council member Cathcart's point, as you know, Chris, one of the things that was happening previously is we were getting a share of the recyclable commodity sales. In another city I was in, we were taking in $4 million a year. When the China Sword hit, and then the international commodity market went very south, we started paying $4 million a year. So there's a lot of changes that are going on in that industry, and to continue to promote strategies and partnerships, Councilmember Cathcart, as you're suggesting, will help reduce those costs, and so we're going to continue to look at that, again, what's in the best interest of our city, our, our ratepayers and customers, as well as our environment. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Good job, too, good job. All right. Continuing on then with our consent agenda, item number 11. The Interlocal Cooperative Act Agreement with Spokane County for the establishment of a Spokane County Tourism Promotion Area, also known as a TPA. Our deputy city attorney, as well as our interim HR director, Mr. Mike Piccolo.
Good afternoon. This item was briefed a couple of weeks ago at the, I believe, the Finance Committee meeting. This is the interlocal agreement with Spokane County and the city of Spokane for the operation of the tourism promotion area. The current one will expire at the end of this year. That one involves Spokane Valley, they have opted to move out of the joint TPA, so a new one is being created. This is, the county will be conducting their hearing tomorrow, they'll be the lead agency, they've done all the meeting notices, and they'll be having their hearing tomorrow at 2 o'clock, but the city will approve the interlocal first, and then they will subsequently approve that agreement, plus all the other documentation they have to approve, and then forward to the state to get the, the assessment to continue on effect of January 1st, 2023. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolo. Item 12 on our consent agenda, recommendation to list on the Spokane Registry of Historic Places, the Dwinell House and Fallout Shelter, 12A, 12B, the William and Ina Ballard House. Our presenter, I believe she's online, is Megan Duval.
I am, thanks very much. Good afternoon, council. Take out my speaker, so hopefully nobody has any questions, because I can't hear you anymore, but there's a little echo. So I have two for you today. I tried to make them short because I saw what a long agenda it is, but they're super interesting properties, so I will run through this part as quick as possible and then get to the two properties. So Spokane Registry of Historic Places, it's our local program, as you know, voluntary, we need the consent of the owner to list properties. We protect these properties through a management agreement. Design review is only when a building permit is sought for exterior of the property, or if they want to paint it. And this is the vehicle that we use to offer incentives to property owners when they improve the property. They need to be 50 years or older generally, and they have to meet criteria in our municipal code. Criteria are the property and resource types, buildings, sites, districts, structures, and objects. And here's the five categories. Category A are broad patterns of Spokane's history. Category B is in association with a significant person. C is our architecture, design, construction category. D is for properties that are important to prehistory or history. And then finally, E is our cultural heritage, things that may not meet the criteria in other ways. Okay, so we have two properties for you today. So the first is the William J. Ballard House. Built in 1917, the William J. and Ina Ballard House is a very good example of an arts and crafts home designed in the Craftsman bungalow style. It is located in the Central Edition on Lot 12, Block 13, and the address is 2624 North Wall Street. The property is surrounded by an architecturally and historically rich residential neighborhood with tree-lined streets consisting of single-family homes built between the 1900s and 1930s. The Ballard House is eligible for listing on the Spokane Registry of Historic Places under category C for both its significance as a property that embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type and period of construction, as well as for its association with William J. Ballard, founder of the Ballard Planery. The house consists of a single story with a shallow pitched front gable metal roof, widely unenclosed overhanging eaves, extended roof rafters and rafter tails, newer shingle siding, and a variety of original wood sash double-hung windows. Perhaps the most notable feature of the home is the peanut brittle-style masonry on the front porch foundation and chimney consisting of round granite cobblestones of varying size, clinker brick, and regular brick in a ground-hugging manner. Flares out as the rock touches the ground with larger stones anchoring the house, and then smaller stones are kind of overtake that, those large stones as it climbs up the wall and up the chimney. Another prominent feature of this home is the front door, which is located on the west-facing facade and features vertical oak panels. The interior of the Ballard House includes a spacious living room and dining room with circulation, walnut trim, baseboard, crown molding, colonade, wainscoting, and fireplace mantle. The original dining room, built-in buffet remains and is a prominent feature of the room. The house includes two bedrooms, a bathroom, kitchen, and breakfast room in addition to the living and dining rooms. William J. Ballard was born in Illinois in 1870. As a 15-year-old, he contracted tuberculosis and went to Los Angeles for the climate. His grandson recounted that Ballard often said that he came out west to die. After working in a fruit drying camp where he met his wife Ina, they married in 1895 in Los Angeles, he moved the family to Spokane around 1902 to work for his father and brother-in-law. Gilbert and Ernest Chambers. Gilbert and Ernest Chamberlain, who had come north to start the Chamberlain Real Estate and Improvement Company in eighteen ninety-nine. Ballard was listed as both the company superintendent and the company architect for the Chamberlain Company, after a brief return to California around nineteen oh-six, the Ballards were back in Spokane in nineteen oh-eight where he founded the Ballard Planery. According to Durham and his history of the city of Spokane and Spokane County, he notes that Ballard studied at both the University of California at Berkeley, followed by studies at the Trup Institute in Pasadena. Our research indicates that Ballard was never a student at either of those schools, and in the nineteen forty census, he reports only having completed his second year of high school, he finally received his architectural license in nineteen twenty-one at the age of fifty-one, the Ballard Planery, which he founded, was used to build hundreds of homes, several apartments and commercial buildings, and even barns and silos in both Spokane and Southern California. The William and Ina Ballard House retains very good integrity and original location, design, materials, workmanship, and association, the Landmarks Commission recommends that it's eligible for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under category C for both its architectural significance, as a good example of an arts and crafts house in the Craftsman Bungalow style, as well as for its association with William Ballard as the architect and the Ballard Planery. Okay, so moving on to the second house that we have, this is the Dwinell House and Fallout Shelter, built in nineteen forty-one, with the Fallout Shelter constructed in nineteen sixty-one, the Dwinell House and Fallout Shelter is located at five oh-four West Nineteenth Avenue, across from Cannon Hill Park in the Cannon Hill neighborhood. The minimal traditional house was built by Henry G. Manser, a custom house builder, for Robert and Elsa Snow in nineteen forty-one, it is clad with dark red, gray, and nearly black clinker brick, it has a complexly, or a complex deeply pitched hip roof with a small eyebrow dormer window on the south or front elevation, the garage is located to the rear of the house and includes an addition from nineteen sixty-one to accommodate the escape hatch of the Fallout Shelter, you'll see that in a second. The Dwinell House and Fallout Shelter meets Spokane City County Register of Historic Places category A as a property that represents the Cold War social history as an example of the construction of a Fallout, of a home Fallout Shelter in Spokane during the nineteen sixty to sixty-one heyday of such activity, the Cold War era, considered to be the contest between two superpowers, the United States and the Soviet Union, began in nineteen forty-seven and continued until the dissolution of the Soviet Union in nineteen ninety-one, one of the most intense periods of nuclear arms buildup, positioning, and posturing occurred between nineteen forty-seven and nineteen sixty-two, followed by a gradual reduction in tensions, Spokane, due to its location, proximity to Fairchild Air Force Base, and as a railroad transportation hub, was considered to be a target if the Cold War heated up to an actual war, the residents of Spokane were well aware of the Cold War situation and news, and probably felt a heightened sense of vulnerability, some residents of Spokane made the decision to construct Fallout Shelters in their own homes, while the numbers of Fallout Shelters constructed in Spokane is unknown, the presence of several construction companies that advertised shelter construction services during nineteen sixty and sixty-one suggests that more than a handful of shelters were constructed in the city. The Dwinell Shelter was permitted on October, in October of nineteen sixty-one, during a period of a few weeks when over two dozen permits were issued, the Dwinells had the means and obvious interest in having their own shelter, and engaged one of the construction firms in Spokane that advertised shelter construction services, the Dwinell Shelter, intact and partially furnished, provides an example of home Fallout Shelter construction in Spokane during this period, this is Ryan Benzy, who's our new clerk three in Historic Preservation, showing how small a Fallout Shelter is, the Fallout Shelter at the Dwinell House is located underground between the house and the garage, shelter constructed consisted of a full-height hallway through the crawl space, north portion of the basement, the masonry Fallout Shelter itself, and the steel tunnel and perpendicular section that gives access to the hatch under the addition in the garage, what you see here is the hatch in the garage for escape, a narrow door provides access to the passageway created through the crawl space to and beyond the original foundation of the house, concrete block walls edge the twenty-two-inch-wide walkway, which has a poured concrete floor, a right-angle turn from, oops, let me go back here, maybe I skipped forward a little too far, but, a right-angle turn from the passageway leads to a short hall and then to the door of the shelter, the finished interior shelter room is seven feet, seven inches by ten feet, two inches, and six feet, four inches tall, with painted plywood walls and is constructed of poured concrete, the shelter was equipped with plumbing for a toilet, a manually operated air blower, ventilation pipes, and an escape hatch, a safe and two bunks, the area between the garage and house used to have two ventilation pipes above ground that served the shelter, which were removed when paving and raised planters were added to the area. The Dwinell House has good historic integrity in terms of design, materials, and workmanship, and very good integrity of location and association, the Fallout Shelter has very good integrity in all aspects of historic integrity, the house and shelter have been well-maintained, and the historic appearance of the nineteen forty-one and nineteen sixty-one time periods remains very strong as a Snow and Dwinell residence. The Landmarks Commission recommends that the Dwinell House and Fallout Shelter is eligible for listing on the Spokane Register of Historic Places under category A. That concludes my report. Your, if I could.
All right, Councilmember Ringel has a question or comment?
That's all right, I'll be honest, all of my Fallout Shelter knowledge comes from the movie Blast from the Past, but, so, I know you said you don't know how many there are in the city of Spokane, do you have a rough?
I can't hear anything. Oh, no, I can't hear anything.
I had such a great joke at the beginning, too, that's all right.
Let's see.
Right.
Okay, now I can hear.
And, so, would you, would you say this again, because I heard you say that we didn't know how many were in there, do you have a rough estimation of how many Fallout Shelters are in Spokane?
You know, there was, there's a book called Take Cover Spokane that was written, and they estimate that at one point maybe three hundred were built in Spokane.
And do you want to know this why?
I don't want to build it, I'm just curious.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much, Megan, I'm gonna interrupt to move to agenda changes, and then we'll come back to full briefing, but we need to get posted what ordinances are on for action tonight, so that people can sign up, so, moving to special budget ordinance, and again, we'll come back and brief some of these things, special budget ordinance three six one nine three, we discussed moving that to the twenty-sixth, is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed nay, any abstentions, all right, that's moved till then, I'm on page nine at three six two six four, Workers' Compensation Fund, I had a email saying the administration would like to table that indefinitely while they do some other work, is there a motion to do that?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded multiple times, any discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed nay, any abstentions, all right, page ten, ordinance C three six two six seven, American Rescue Plan funding for fire overtime, I'm looking, this hasn't gone through the ARPA yet, I'm pretty sure this is what's gonna end up, but the Budget Committee's been working to try to get all the necessary expenses and all the funds and do it at kind of one time, so I'm looking for a motion to table this indefinitely.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed nay, any abstentions, all right, that's tabled for a bit, I did let the administration know what we're doing on that.
Council President?
Yeah.
Three six two six six, I have an amendment that I sent out, or Matt Boston actually sent out earlier today.
I'm gonna come back to that, I'll make a note, but we don't have to amend it to get it on the thing, but when we get to the briefing of it. And then, I'm on page eleven, the rules are suspended already, but there's a request to put the resolution approving settlement of one portion of the NOVAC case, the claim from his father, for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, is there a motion to add that to tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion, all those in favor of adding to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed nay, any abstentions, all right, that's added, and same, three six two six two, Mr. Ringel, we'll come back to your amendments on that, we already did not, all right, as I mentioned a little bit, when we were doing the advanced agenda, I'm now on page twelve, the ordinance related to forfeiture funds, I'm looking for a motion to defer that first reading to September nineteenth. Which one was that? This is the ordinance on forfeiture funds, at the advanced agenda, we put the final reading on the twenty-sixth, and so this would be to move the first reading from tonight to the nineteenth.
So moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed nay, any abstentions, all right, that's done, and then we're at special considerations, and I had a request from Councilmember Kinnear to substitute, and also potential request to defer, but I'm gonna take the motion to substitute if you're gonna make that.
So the motion to substitute, I make a motion to substitute, and insert the language, the underside, council members, Jacoby circulated that to all of you already, and so it's four words.
Second.
Okay, so moved and seconded, any discussion, all those in favor of the substitution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed nay, any abstentions, all right, that's substituted.
And then, Council President?
Yep.
I wanted to make a motion to defer indefinitely.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right, so there's a motion to defer indefinitely, which doesn't preclude individual council members from writing their own letters, any discussion about that?
So, that was my question, so if it's deferred, then individual council members that wanted to sign it would have to do their own letters?
They could do their own letter, up to three people on it.
Okay.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just feel bad for the West Hills not having an opportunity to be heard, so that's all I can really say to that.
Okay, any other discussion, all those in favor of the motion to defer indefinitely indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed nay?
No.
That was two people, any abstentions, all right, five to two, it's deferred indefinitely, and then I had a request for, the rules are already suspended, but to add something to our agenda, Councilmember Kinnear.
Yes, are we doing the moratorium now, so I would like to add emergency ordinance C three six two seven, sorry, three C six two seven six, imposing an immediate moratorium regarding building permit applications for residential structures in the Leighton-Hangman and Grandview-Thorpe neighborhoods, setting a public hearing, declaring an emergency to tonight's legislative session agenda, I know James Richman, I see you in the back there, come on up, we'd love to talk to you, so, Mr. Richman's been helping us with this, as you know, the staff has been working on impact fees and GFCs, and that's gonna take, we estimate, four to six months before those are completed, we wanted to give them time to complete those, and without having the pressure of additional people, additional developers coming in and getting in under the wire, so, could you talk a little bit about that for us?
About the impact fees, or?
About how, just talk to us about the process and the fact that it is just burst on upon our agenda, because, tell us about why that is so.
Well, similar to the ordinance that you adopted a few weeks ago, the interim zoning ordinance, the city has the authority to adopt moratoria under the same power, and it can do so on an emergency basis without any notice, and if it does it without notice, it's required to hold a hearing on, on the moratorium within sixty days, and this ordinance that we've drafted provides for a hearing within sixty days of this evening, we've drafted this in a way that we feel is, is very defensible, consistent with the city's police zoning power, and, and hopefully it will despise enough time to get, update our impact fees for both transportation facilities, and then there's also a need to update our, some of our charges relating to utility infrastructure, so that the development that occurs in this area of town pays a proportionate share of the facilities that are needed to benefit the new development that's occurring in this part of town, without, without updating our fees, the development that, that is occurring, the fees that we're currently charging are inadequate to cover the cost of facilities that are needed in this area, I think you saw or heard in the meeting not too long ago, Inga outlined a list of projects that are needed to provide transportation service in this area, and the price tag was pretty significant, so, so, anyway, we're just trying to buy some time to get those new fees in place, so that the new development that happens will pay a proportionate share of the cost of those facilities.
And before we have any council commentary or other questions, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, how can we be voting on something that literally none of us have seen, heard about, like, this is so untransparent, we had an entire committee this afternoon where we had an extra hour, we could have heard this, why is this coming to us at four fifty-seven, an hour before our meeting?
That wasn't our decision, but, but, but I will tell you, in the past, when, when the city has adopted moratoria, we've done it in this fashion, with the moratorium, you're generally trying to prevent people from coming in at the last minute with applications, it would sort of undermine what you're trying to accomplish with the moratorium, so if, if we gave notice that we were gonna adopt a moratorium, there could be potentially a rush of projects coming in under the wire to vest under the current regulations in impact fees, which are much lower than we're anticipating.
And just looking at this map, it looks like it very carefully carves out Sunset, where all the development is being discussed in the West Hills.
The, the moratorium as drafted applies to the Leighton-Hangman and Grandview-Thorpe neighborhoods.
Right, but it carves them out, right, West Hills is not a part of this.
It leaves off, there's a small area of, of the Grandview-Thorpe neighborhood, I believe, that lies north of I-90, and we, I think we left that off, because it more appropriately belongs in, I think, the West Plains Service area for impact fees.
This is crazy.
And if I can.
Councilmember Streton.
I, I just want to add that we have had, this isn't even my district, and I've had calls, I would say for the last three or four months, from individuals, people living up in that area, there is so much development going on, and there doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason with the neighbors, they have no idea, they're worried about structure, road, road infrastructure, getting in and out, Lori can talk a little bit more about that, they're worried about fire safety because of the increase in people coming up and the building, do we have the water to protect them during fire, it's been a pretty big issue.
But I guess I would ask, why are we not, what I would argue is a far more, a better policy, which would be to simply just remove the whole area out of the UGA, let's not lose all that developable land, let's reallocate it somewhere else where we can actually get more housing built, instead of just simply putting a ban on housing in, in a pretty good portion, frankly, where we have twenty-five hundred units waiting to be built right now, let's offer trades and move them into somewhere else where we can accommodate.
Well, as a matter of fact, I mean, I've been trying to get some information leading up to this, and I just got some information this morning, it, it appears that there's actually a very small number of buildable lots in this area, we have a lot of proposals, a lot of plat applications, some of which are vested, some of which have received preliminary approval, but very few of which have received final approval, and until you have final approval on a plat, you can't, you can't sell lots and, and build houses, so you can't get a building permit until your lot's been finalized, and, so, I think there's, I mean, I, I had a conversation earlier today that led me to believe there may only be as many as thirty buildable lots in this area, most of the buildable lots have already been built, there are, I think, a couple of larger parcels that may be eligible for multifamily housing, so there's potential there for, for a couple of large apartment projects, but, but it's not like it's, it's not like we have several hundred lots up there where somebody could come in with building permits.
If that's the case, then what's the urgency, why don't we wait a week, actually have some real transparency, be up, you know, like, up- upfront with the public? I mean, if we're going to take these two neighborhoods offline, what's next? Indian Trail? Are we going to take them offline? Five Mile? Are we going to take them offline? I mean, how are we going to, you know, this is, this requires a much larger policy discussion than to just ban housing in one part of our community.
Yeah, those are policy decisions, that's not in my...
No, but it's 5:01 PM on the day we're going to vote on this thing. There is no transparency at all on this. This is just backwards.
Councilmember Wilkerson, then Councilmember Kinnear.
So, yes, we have heard from our constituents in District 2, particularly in these neighborhoods, we are not banning development, we are asking for a six-month moratorium to get the fees in line that are equitable to the development that's going in there, and to kind of get our hands around on what the next step is. True, we just got it tonight, Councilmember Kinnear and I worked on it because we've been dealing with this for some time now, so this is just a pause, it's not a ban. I just want to make those two words distinct as we go forward.
She raised a good point. As written, it's only good for six months, and there's a hope that we might be able to finish our work on the fees faster than that, and you would be able to end the moratorium earlier.
Councilmember Kinnear.
This has been something and an area that's been identified by WashDOT as a problem area since 2000 or before, and the city has not taken any action to mitigate the traffic concerns or any other concerns related to growth. So here we are, at the last minute, yes, because we don't want to rush on development services for people to get in under the wire so that they can avoid paying their fair share. And yeah, it's last minute, and what we didn't want was for phone calls to go out to developers saying, get in here now so that you don't have to pay your fair share. And it is not a ban, so I really object to reframing this as a ban on development when it is a pause, so that we can do the work that we need to do and make sure that things are paid for by the people who need to pay for them. Thank you.
And if I could add one thing that might help a little bit, too, this is not a moratorium on land use applications, so developers can continue to submit plat applications and we can continue to process those. So once the moratorium is lifted, if they've gotten to the final plating stage, they can pull building permits. So it won't delay that process. That's the lengthy process in the development process, is the plating process, which can take years.
Councilmember Ringel.
So you said roughly 30 lots that are developable in here.
I won't guarantee that information. I was told that number by somebody in planning earlier today.
Do we have any idea how many units that would translate into and families moving into this area? Because back to Councilman Cathcart's point, you know, if it's not actually going to make that much of a difference, I don't understand the point of it. And so those 30 lots, how many units would that, like, roughly translate into?
I think most, my understanding was that most of those are single-family lots, so they would, you know, under the current code, they could potentially build up to a fourplex on each of those under the interim zoning ordinance. It's my understanding, though, that there is also a couple of larger parcels where there's been some preliminary inquiries into a couple of large apartment complexes that involve several hundred units each.
Councilmember Kinnear, and then Councilmember Wilkerson.
So I just got a message from Spencer saying that things that still can occur under the moratorium are renovations, additions, and plaques.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Well, I was just going to say, in the world of development, I'm not a developer, but I don't know if six months is a deal breaker for any developer going forward. So again, it's a pause, not a ban.
And then the public hearing was set for November 7, 2022.
Yeah, I just picked a date that was less than 60 days from tonight.
James, thank you so much for your work on this, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
So the motion is to add this to the agenda, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of adding it to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay?
Nay.
Abstentions? All right, that's five to two, it's added to the agenda. And we can go back. I believe that's all. Does anyone else have any other agenda items? We'll go back to the briefing, including proposed amendments, when we come to those.
Thank you, Council President. Continuing on with the consent agenda for advanced briefing Monday, September 12. Item 13, contract with McKinney Street Company HVAC service at the Riverside Park Water Reclamation Facility. Our presenter is Mr. John Eckhart, the interim Assistant Plant Manager.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and Council President. This is a contract for McKinney Street for service and preventative maintenance on all of our HVAC equipment at the treatment facility. The total cost is $77,900. Part of that, we will also get, we'll get detailed reports for our inspections and service. They will give us priority, scheduling, and 24/7 emergency response. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, John. Item 14, contract renewal with Financial Consulting Solutions for rate structure analysis of the city's water, sewer, and stormwater utility rates. Our presenters are Public Works Director Marlene Feist.
Thank you, council members and Council President and Council City Administrator. So this contract, we've been working for a while to make sure that various classes of customers are paying their fair share around our utility rates. So we haven't finished that work, so we have asked for an extension here. We haven't spent nearly the amount of money that we've allocated each year, so while this is just acknowledging the potential up to 260,000 costs, we've actually retained that over the last three years, so we're just going to keep moving that work forward, and that will inform us as we develop rates going forward. So we might see some different balancing between commercial and residential and multifamily as a result of that work.
So were you saying this money is money that's already been allocated to you and just hasn't been spent for these purposes? Is that what you were saying?
That's right. That's right, but it has to move forward with the contract, so. But yeah, we haven't spent, we could spend up to this amount in the previous contract per year, and we haven't spent nearly that much. It's just that work's just been going a little slower than we anticipated. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Item 16 and 17. Item 16, interlocal agreement with Washington State Department of Transportation to reimburse for construction of trail segment under the Trent Avenue Bridge. Item 17, an on-call consulting agreement with LSB Consulting Engineers. Our presenter is Mr. Dan Buller.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Item 16, proposed interlocal agreement with WashDOT for construction of the trail segment underneath the Trent Bridge at a cost of approximately $192,000. As shown in your briefing paper, this is a key link, but not the final link in the proposed connection of Ben Burr Trail from roughly brown building material to iron bridge. This work is planned yet this fall. And item 17, proposed agreement with LSB Consulting Engineers for on-call structural engineering services for $500,000. This is one of a number of on-call contracts that we'll be requesting your approval on over the next three or four months. We have on-call contracts with specialty engineers, specialty engineering firms that we don't have in-house.
Thank you, Mr. Buller. Item 18, acceptance of fiscal year 2021 Continuum of Care Program Award and Agreement. Our presenter, Heather Page.
Thank you. Okay, so this is, we're seeking approval to accept the fiscal year 2021 COC Program Awards from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and approval to enter into subrecipient agreements with the awarded grantees. Every year we go through a competitive process to earn these awards. We were successful, we have four point, let's see, what is it? $4,333,859 pending our acceptance.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Thanks for staying here this afternoon. Item 19, A and B Reports of the Mayor Pending Claims and Payments of Previously Approved Obligation, including those of Parks and Library. Items 19C, Payroll Claims of Previously Approved Obligations through September 3, 2022. And item 20, City Council Meeting Minutes, August 22, 29, September 1, and September 8. And those two items will be considered here shortly this evening. Moving then to our special budget ordinances, the forfeiture ordinance has been moved to September 26, which places our next ordinance up for briefing from our Fire Chief, Brian Schaefer, regarding a study of current and future fire department facilities. Chief Schaefer.
Good long afternoon. Appreciate your time and your participation in this. This was an interdisciplinary team that created and evaluated RFP for an organization or an agency to study the siding of current and future fire stations for our community into the, into the future, considering all of the changes that may be able to be seen and those that we may not even be able to imagine as practitioners in our own disciplines. But, you know, the consultant will be working with WADOT and other leaders and help us design a system for the future to empower the policymakers to make better decisions and for us to make better operational decisions in the future. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Schaefer. The Workers Compensation Fund Ordinance has been moved at the request of the administration, which takes us then to the ordinance relating to the Gulf Fund and the cost increases in supplies and fuels. And our presenter, who I believe is online, Mr. Mark Buening, who's the Finance and Budget Director for our Parks and Recreation Division. Mark.
Thank you, everybody. I hope you can hear me okay. I am presenting virtually today, obviously. Pinch-hitting for Garrett, this is a, a requested appropriation of $120,000 to the Gulf Fund from up-and-cumbered fund balance. $80,000 of this is related to costs, or increased costs related primarily to fuel, fertilizers, really any supplies that are petroleum-related. And the other $40,000 is related to roofing project that is, was being done at Downriver Clubhouse. We had an unanticipated capital expense related to water metering that was in our capital plan, so we need to request the additional funding to continue with that Downriver roof project. Any questions?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Our next ordinance addresses the need for council's request to run an election this year. Our presenter is Jessica Stratton from our Finance Department.
All right. Good afternoon, council, or is it evening? I'm not sure. So I'm here to brief the SBO for Election Services. In July, council passed a resolution requesting the Spokane County Auditor to hold an election to amend sections of the city charter regarding the appointment, duties, and powers of the city attorney. So the estimated cost for the service is $250,000. It could be more, it could be less. The variables are how many jurisdictions have ballot proposals, and of those jurisdictions, how many have, what is the count of registered voters? Of course, Spokane has many, so we often bear a greater cost. So over the last four years, election services have ranged between $29,000 and $223,000. So we estimate it high just to be able to pay the bill when it comes due. Any questions?
I had a quick question for you. In the past, whenever the council has put things on, like the fire EMS levy and things like that, where have the funds come from for the election?
When we know that they're coming due, like levies?
No, when we know, when we put it on, like the fire EMS levy that we did, not just in the last year, where do the funds usually come from?
The general fund.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this $250,000 will also come from the general fund, then?
Reserves.
That's how it's written currently.
Yes.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so I, Matt Boston sent around an amendment, and my feeling is frankly, if it's a council-initiated amendment, charter amendment, I think we should bear some responsibility in covering the cost out of our department, and especially right now when we're in a very difficult budget situation. And so this is a very simple, modest, real, really amendment that would take our salary savings from a few vacancies that we've had and probably will have for a little bit of time going forward, and use those salary savings to pay for a portion of this. To me, that just seems like the reasonable thing to do, and frankly, I think it would be a good standard practice that we would pay for a portion, or even all of any sort of council-sponsored charter amendments going forward. But for the time being, I think at least paying for about a half of this with those salary savings would be a good move. So that's why I'm putting this forward.
Is that a motion?
That is a motion, yes.
Thank you.
It's moved and seconded. Any discussion? Councilmember Wilkerson.
I certainly hear Councilman McKeck cart. However, this ballot measure will not just benefit the council, it will benefit the whole city in the legal advice that we receive and the independence of that office. So it's just not benefiting the seven of us up here. So for that from perspective, I think the general fund is the appropriate place for the funding to come out of at this time.
And I'll speak against the motion as well. So we put, council is the one that puts matters on the ballot all the time. We do that regularly, just about every year, we put something on the ballot. It's always come from the general fund, and this is not something that council is doing, it's simply making it available for voters to choose. And as a practical matter, any salary savings that we have are going to go into the general fund at the end of the year, so it seems a little more political statement than it is a practical matter from where I sit, so I'm going to not support the amendment, but thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so I don't have the exact number in front of me, but we're somewhere around 12.3 million, I think, that's in our unappropriate reserves. We started at 20 million not that long ago. We've got 300,000 that's coming out for a fire truck today, we've got a number of other pressures on that. This is another quarter million dollars that would come out of that fund. Very quickly, we're going to have nothing left in that fund as we try to balance this very unbalanced budget. So I'm very worried, you can call it political to be worried about our budget, but frankly I am, and it's forcing me to make some pretty tough decisions that I'm probably going to have to continue to make for the next few months. So that's, I think this is critical, that we start thinking about how we're going to pay for every single thing we do and be really smart about it. And in this case, we chose to put this on the ballot. You can argue the benefits or not to other departments, but this isn't a routine thing like the EMS levy or anything else. This is something that was a decision, frankly, a political decision of this council to put it on the ballot, and so I think that we can help to come up with some of the funding to cover the cost of putting it there.
And I'll just respond briefly, that I am so glad you are equally concerned with the budget, and you and Councilmember Wilkerson and I are on the council budget work group, and we are looking at all those things. The EMS levy and all these other things that we put on the ballot in the last seven years that I've been on council are not routine, they're significant, they're big things that have impacted the city, and I just don't want to set the precedent that when we vote, we're the only ones that can vote from the city government to put it on. Community members can, of course, sponsor their own proposals. And as a practical matter, again, all our salary savings are going to go into the general fund at the end of the year, and there should be hopefully some savings that we can add to that, so. All right, all those in favor of the motion to make the amendment that was circulated earlier indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Nay. I believe that was two in favor and five opposed, so that does not carry at this point. I think that's all on this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stratton. We are not going to brief, no briefing on the fire overtime request. We did brief on the flusher trucks, Mr. Giddings did that earlier as part of his earlier presentations. That takes us to the next special budget ordinance, which is a staffing request on the Comprehensive Plan and Development Code resulting from the pilot zoning ordinance. Some staffing changes that Mr. Spencer Gardner, our Director of Planning, is going to walk us through.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. We talked about this in, let's see, it was Finance Committee, I think, that we came and talked about it. So in the wake of the interim zoning ordinance, we are committed to making updates to our comprehensive plan and our development code. Part of that is a desire to bring in a consultant to help us with the development code. We have a significant amount of salary savings because of the vacancies we've had over the course of the year, so this would be neutral in terms of the general fund. This is just taking the salary savings that's sitting already within our department and re... repurposing that so we can bring in a consultant to do that work. Any questions?
I just have a statement on this. I'm glad that this is happening. You know, we proposed a resolution earlier on home occupations and home businesses that I'm, I'm hoping that with this consultant, that they'll also look into the home occupations and home businesses as we're sort of, you know, working on this, on this code update. And so I'm looking forward to it. I hope it is very successful.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Gardner, before you go, can I keep you here for the hearing H1 on the interim zoning ordinance passed by the City Council on July 18, 2022? Wasn't sure if you needed to brief.
There's not much to say. I'll just remind you, so in July, we adopted the, you, council, adopted the interim zoning ordinance. There's a requirement that we have a hearing within 60 days, and so tonight is that hearing. I prepared a presentation. I assumed that we would show it during the hearing. I could give it now if you want, but that's probably better.
Let's do it during the hearing.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. All right. Moving along then, Mr. Crowder had already previously briefed us on the resolution for Feltz Field Airport, so we don't need to go through that a second time. I believe Mr. Smithson has briefed the council on the NOVAC case for that resolution. That takes us then to an ordinance relating to the amendment of the Spokane Fair Elections Code, and I'll turn it over to Councilmember Zapone.
Yeah, this has been briefed at committee, so I don't think I have much more to add to it.
Councilmember Ringel, you have some amendments?
Yeah, I have, I have two amendments. I think I'm actually only going to move forward with, with one of them. But the one amendment that I would like to move forward is the one that allows people who receive contracts from the city to still, to be able to donate to elections. I think that as we're talking about, you know, a fair and level playing field, I think we just need to make the rules plain, clear, and simple for everybody to follow. That pertains to everybody equally. And so for me, this is, this is why I'm bringing it forward. I'm, I'm glad that we're updating some of the portions of the code. Like I said, I think, you know, they impact people differently, but I think this one, this amendment will make it to where everybody has the ability to participate in local elections, so.
And that was Amendment Two that you circulated, I think.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion about the proposed amendment? Councilmember Zapone.
Yeah, I'd just say that I don't agree with the amendment, and the reason is because city contractors are, operate differently than unions or other ones. They're not personally, or they are personally profiting off contracts with the city, whereas workers are not, and they're an individual entity. This doesn't preclude them from being able to donate through their individual capacity just as a business.
Councilmember Ringel.
Yeah, I believe it does keep principals of businesses from being able to donate to, to elections, and so it's not that individuals can still donate. And also, workers in unions absolutely do benefit from contract negotiations that happen behind closed doors. And so I know one of the things that we're trying to avoid is money having undue influence on contracts, and I think that's a very noble proposal, and I, and I really appreciate it. I think that unions and union contracts benefit in the same way that you're looking at people who receive city contracts. And so I think that if you're going to ban one, you need to ban both. If you're going to allow one, you need to allow both in the interest of fairness and equality.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor of adopting the amendment indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those oppose, nay. Nay. Any abstentions? All right, it was two to five, and so the amendment does not carry. Okay, and you said you were just going to do that one amendment.
Just the one, yeah.
Yep. All right, continue on.
Thank you, Council President. Really, in closing, the last few items, we, Ms. Beck has already provided the briefing regarding the Eastbreak Parking and Business Improvement Area, Ordinance 36270. Mr. Freebrot was here to discuss the amendments to the city's comprehensive plan.
Okay.
Council President Beggs, we moved the forfeiture funds discussion to September 19, the ordinance side, relating to the, the illegal camping ordinance, protection of public lands and properties. That has been briefed already, so you'll consider that this evening. And then finally, under special considerations, S1, I believe that item was deferred indefinitely.
Great.
And with that, sir, that concludes a very busy Monday, September 12, advanced briefing.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda for this evening as modified?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose, nay? Any abstentions? All right, the agenda's adopted. You have a little bit of time before 6 o'clock. We are adjourned.
We've got a whole 30 minutes.